You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the November 21st meeting of the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county.org.
Has council had a chance to revise that? Any questions or comments at all? The only correction I had once on the bottom of the second page was on Krista Hudson's last name, but I didn't say it was me. Any others? There are no questions or comments. Do you have a motion to approve minutes?
Motion to approve minutes, Dr. Colby. Sorry.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the meeting's under. Oh, actually, minutes for the special meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting. I'll come with it if you have. Sorry.
Any questions or comments? During the discussion, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now moving on to the under. This is front and back. Any questions or comments? Does anyone need to sit down on the under? Do we have a motion to approve the under?
Make a motion.
I'll second. Thank you. You go on the second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Moving on to the under bills. Any questions or comments? No, I didn't see anything. It's not out.
Any outstanding signatures, outstanding or problems?
No, these are all.
All good?
All good. Do we have a motion to approve payment of the bills?
Make a motion to approve the bills.
On the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to correspondence. I think we have one note here.
Yes.
And this looks like this is Carolyn Dixon. She didn't put her address on here, but. This is quite an help. Please hire someone who picks up the leaves responsibly. I have talked to the street department. They have been out for three weeks. I patrol Trail Creek area continually and can tell you they haven't been out for two or three hundred times. This job is continual and they need to be out five days a week for their part-time staffs. You cannot give them free arraignment when they go out. I was not told they were part-time until years after moving. I was told the job would be done. It was the last three years, but they have been inconsistent. Fact, you cannot say a job is provided in a trial. It appears you owe us, Trail Creek citizens, a refund. If you should get this cleaned up on your dollar, not ours. Since you have failed, I talked to a lot of people who live right around town who say the same thing. So get it cleaned up on your dollar and get your employees under schedule with the rules. Like one, you have to work 7:00 to 1:00 p.m. for the part-time staff. It's five days a week. There were excuses. The machine broke down because of what was picked up. We are waiting on parts, et cetera. We are already. We already know the job can be done without those. Thank you, Ms. Dixon, for your comments. We take those into consideration. Unfortunately, those aren't just excuses, but when that machine does go down, we only have the one machine. So. There's not really any other way to do that job without the one machine. So we'll address this with the street department and we will. See if they can come up with another plan for this one. Not a whole lot else we can do because I've got one machine. Moving on, since we have no other correspondence. Anything for MS4 that I know of, sir? You know, we have the audit, the responses have been submitted, and there should not be anything to work for. MS4 that I know of right now.
Just the word that's at some point, there's some. Language that there's not much that you can get a choice between or out, but I just need to confirm that for sure, otherwise absolutely could I have them to hire.
Okay. So will we manage to reach a little bit?
I have no updates. Question, houses on. Well, I would need a way to have it assessed as to condition and citations. It would be. So I have no progress because I have a baseline to progress.
So what would we need to get you there to that point?
Well, I don't know who. I don't make citations. I don't inspect the property, so I don't. I don't know who I'm supposed to work with on that, but. I'll be thoroughly aware and I'll.
Would it be either Bill Inspector and/or Steve or a combination thereof? Because we had Steve come through.
Oh, I totally agree, a combination.
Inspections on the property to make sure it's safe. But it's part of the violation, so it's a combination thereof.
I would disagree with that. You know, I know Chief has been out there. I've talked to him in the last month with regard to any citations because again, it's. Conditions and being pointed out, what is or isn't they compliant, so.
So would you say that what we need to do is. Meet at the house and do the walkthrough, or are we bringing a scallywag down? We just sit down and talk about it?
Then we can get into the properties.
Yeah, I just need updates on my. I have nowhere where I from last month or the previous month or those before there, so. Can start with, how about I just start with Marshall, so I will try to go from there and contact the building commissioner inspector. Although I don't even know if we're not successful on that.
Okay.
Does Chris have copies of everything that you have at this point? Okay.
That stuff's outdated and there are citations that if they haven't been acted upon, they're old, so.
So at least you have that information from the background that you can.
Well, if those conditions, I can't act on those because of the age of them, but it'll be a baseline. So I'll just work with Marshall and we can reach out to him. To build it in flat there and if we don't make that way, just report back to you on that. I would also want to be part of the team, but that's okay. Well, you are the team, so.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
So what I'll do is. Either you keep me posted or I'll contact you once in a while and see Steve on the road or something. I'll see how we do on it.
How about I just send an email to the three that I mentioned and you to coordinate a date and we can go there and that'll be easy.
Excellent. Thank you.
Got it.
Hi, Karen. Hi, Sarah. For a time.
I'm gonna pass it on because both items that I was going to talk about are under hold this afternoon.
Okay, so we'll come back to you then.
I'll be waiting.
Moving on to the park department.
Hi, Amanda. Hi. Okay, we had our meeting last night. I'm gonna get a present. We had our meeting last night. It's just kind of doing a raffle with the Fall Festival, kind of see what would go with that. We had a great turnout, very excited about it. We had, I think, probably about 500 people. So and a lot of compliments, I think, from what I've heard and the feedback that I've heard as far as people like to see more done with the parks. But we also know we have a lot going on with the parks and a lot of updates to make. So that new suite set will be delivered on the 2nd of February. It will not be installed until obviously the ground flaws. But we still have to call NISCO to get everything marked out as far as making sure the lines and everything are fine. The final price for that was $11,585. But we only have, as according to my new appropriation reports, $9,991.98. So apparently there's a little bit more money in the CCN. Yep, and that fund, which we will be using our entire budgets for that suite set. Because I don't want to roll it over, and that's what it's here for. So we will be having the suite set. It's pretty much will hopefully be painted full. I don't know if I need a motion to do that or to have that officially. I think we've already done that. I was gonna say. Yep, oh, perfect, okay. So the suite set will be delivered. The only thing, the things that we are, we kind of talked about yesterday in our 2024 objectives. Because I kind of went around and asked where everybody was, what things that we wanted to see, so I could come back to you guys and kind of tell you what our plans are for 2024. And I think a couple of concerns that came up with us are, I know the centennial celebration is a thing for us and a thing for the town, a thing for you guys. And we were hoping that maybe we could find out a date on that so we could kind of get moving. Because I know even with the Fall Festival, that took us about three months to plan for just what we did with that. And so I don't know, as far as our budget goes, because we want, we need to tear off swings and things like that. We know that we want to be a part of that. We just want to know.
So we don't think that there's a specific date on Christmas centennial celebration planned on Friday now? So if the park board would like to plan a specific date.
We, you guys, I remember you guys vaguely saying that maybe the adoption date was in April. We were hoping to kind of push it out because we were hoping to do maybe like an Easter egg hunt and re grand opening for Pritz Park. Because I know Mr. Pritz was very concerned about the fact that he wanted to knock the signages up. Both between decoys at the one and the one on the west side. And then we have the new park entrance sign at the actual entrance of the dog park. So my concern about doing Easter egg hunting, something that large scale, would be parking in that area because. We were thinking doing it the same day in Michigan City, just federally. I know it apparently turns into a whole thing. And if we can keep Michigan City residents kind of busy with their whole thing, we're hoping to do some people for Trail Creek. But we also need to conduct our survey for our creative work, so we can get rest of our money to do stuff for the parks. So we have to conduct that survey one way or the other, knocking on doors. I don't know if this is going to be as productive as I would like it to be. So we were trying to find an event where we can pull the community in to get that survey done, but also give something back so that they can see what we can do with the parks. So.
We'll talk about that.
Yeah, so those are kind of like the 24 objectives. 24 objectives that we have, but it's also removal of equipment, which also costs us money. Because we have to hire the street department. It's going to be an excavator. I never say that right, yeah. And so these are some of the things that we're worried about because that new suite set is getting delivered. And we have those space max out for it, but as far as how we're going to get that old equipment out, I can't do anything until that next budget. So. That, there was that. I think that's really, oh, yes, and I would also like to talk about us having control of a Facebook page. I was gonna say, I know that the town trophy has one. I believe the trophy police department has one. The parks would like to have some sort of access to a Facebook page of our own, just so that we can keep people updated with events that we do. If we do decide that we want to do an Easter egg hunt, if we can't keep them updated about updates that we're making as far as suite sets, new equipment. Even get them more involved with the community as far as what equipment they'd like to see or even for the survey. I was gonna say, it would be nice to have control and keep people updated as far as that situation. So I was hoping to come to council and ask that I, we understand that there needs to be an administrator from the council or what, you know, whatnot to oversee all of that. But we would like the, we would like to have the ability to access and give information about what we do to the community. Because I think that us posting it on social media about the Fall Festival really changed the way things went as far as how many visitors. We made, we did like $400 donations, which was awesome. And that was without us really pushing for the donations. That was just the vendors giving us something back. But it would be nice to be able to kind of reach out and keep people aware of what we're doing with that and like be able to pull in more donations.
I think it's a great idea, honestly, because we get to frame rain over, you know, updates for the parks. But it also gives you a way to thank those sponsors and those members.
Exactly, so we'd like to do that.
My only concern would be that we've got multiple pages. I'd like to kind of keep them under one.
Right, but we do have the one for the police, the one for the town, and we have one for the park. So it's kind of hard unless we have multiple administrators for multiple pages. We can do that.
Right.
If we wanted to do it that way.
We're, we're okay with the administrator. We understand that that has to happen just for, for she's the sake of it.
I think that all in one place is better for the actual distribution of information.
Are you proposing that we reallow it to the park?
Yes, that's what I'm.
We're okay with that. We just like the ability to be able to post pictures of the event. Pictures of the event, but for like legality liability issues, like Katrina's the one who posted about the Fall Festival and got that, they got the comment. But because it said she was hosted by her, I got worried that people thought it was an individual posting and not the park board. And so just to, to like keep us safe and, you know, everybody safe as far as how the process of.
I would, I would be comfortable putting the park board president on this.
Yes.
Whoever is the serving park board president, as long as whoever that is has a Facebook page. To have access to our park town page, so whoever else is okay with that.
I appreciate that, and that would go a long way. Yeah, we would have paper app now, like innovative with all those nonsense things.
Just we need to make sure that the park board has access to or at least is able to send updates for our website. Because having that ability to post our website, a lot of traffic goes there for people who aren't able to get on Facebook or don't have Facebook pages. Because not everybody does that.
And even just with, even with the dog park registration and things like that, like we need to do an inform. When we, we, I mean, we'd like to put a box out there, but it's just even people don't understand that there is a fee if you're not the trail free president. And it would be just nice to let people know that they have to like come to, that they have to fill out a form in order to have your dog there. So even with like just the social media with that aspect, just to keep people as far as like aware of the situation as far as the time for the park closes. And what events and things we're doing, it would be nice to have access. So like we'd be that, because that would go a long way with us.
So what's the motion to allow social media access?
I move to allow the park board president access to our social media on Facebook.
And I second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
And the only other thing I would like to bring up is, is there someone or do I need to, is it under, like, am I allowed to have a key to let us into our park board meetings? Or do I need to call dispatch every time? Because the last couple of meetings, we've had to stop, we've had to start after or after start time. Because if I wait to have, to, well, to have somebody to open the building and shut the building down. I have, I just want to know if that's something that is doable or if I need people in the route of calling dispatch and having someone sent out? Because I know that Nick helped us out last night, but he was already off.
I usually have a key and I live right around the park and I know that you. I remember it to be eleven, I should come around the corner.
Perfect. And then just so for, we know for legality purposes, how often, how many days ahead of time do we have to give notice to the public regarding our meetings?
Mr. Loeb?
Depends on the nature of the meeting, but generally 48 hours, I couldn't.
It is 48 hours on the weekends, okay.
Or holidays.
Alright. We were all under the impression it was 10 days, so that's why I wanted to verify that.
10 days is usually the publication thing for public hearings, but I can send people that focuses in general that will. I don't doubt, rarely have public meetings, but, or public hearings, but outside of that.
Yes, so that is everything that I have for now. What I was gonna say for us is just wrapping up the rest of the year. We've already used our budget, so we don't have to worry about rolling anything over, so. We're good.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Alright, moving on, our Bill Inspector, I don't see this evening. We'll move on from that. Anything for the other? Moving on to the police department?
Okay.
Hello.
Good evening. Hello, Phil. Just a couple of things. Last month's meeting, I failed to give credit to the street department for their work on the assisting of the signs. Getting out, cleaning the bases for the speed signs. They got that knocked out right away. And I failed to do that. I apologize to the street department for not giving them enough props last month. Having said of that, everything for the radar signs is in. It's just a matter now of waiting for the street department to have time to assemble them and put them in place. So hopefully sometime after leaf season, we can go on that. Halloween, we had an amazing turnout. From the time we started to the time we actually ran out of everything, about an hour and 15 minutes in. We had a line at least 10 to 15 people deep and it was just nonstop. We went through 30 gallons of hot chocolate, 775 cups. 2,400 pieces of candy and six bags of marshmallows, which is more than we've done in the last couple of years. It just keeps growing, growing, growing. That's very well received by the public and it's something that we look forward to doing every year. One of these years, we'll plan on making it better. That's all I got for you tonight. You have anything for me?
Are the radar signs in?
Yes, they are in. They're in the front bay, sitting on pallets, just waiting to be assembled and upgraded.
Awesome.
That's, that's it.
Appreciate your support, guys.
Anything for our street department? I see one of our employees here this evening. Before you get started, I do want to thank you for your hard work. I believe season, I know.
Very well.
Not an easy job, contrary to what some of our assistants told me, and you should rest up.
I see you out every day.
I see you guys. Not only do I see you, I hear you if I can't visually.
It's very loud, yes.
Very loud.
Yes, and what I'll introduce myself. My name is Mike Vincent, and I've been on the street department coming up, I think, two years. When I'm on it. I saw Steve. He brought a note for his notes. I'm gonna read you my notes. It says, "Not so."
Mine's a sticky note.
So some of these things, we've already done over and I'll just flash them real quick. If you have questions, stop me. And as we sit, we hit the bottom of it. First note I had was the dog park with the Pritz Park signs. We got those out. Those are ready to go. We had a complaint about the entrance gates to the dog park. Apparently there was a handicap or a wheelchair lady that couldn't get in. We, and we were asked to raise the gates. We raised the gates to clear the wood mulch. Then when they're closed, there's a gap at the bottom where afraid dogs will escape. We went out today and looked at the gates. The gates open fully past if you pull them away from the mulch, both sides. You pull them away from the mulch, you have clear access of the gate. There's, there's nothing to stop anybody from full access through the width of the gate. So you just have to open the gate in a proper direction.
Will be necessary to remulch this right now?
Oh, we remulch every year, every year. And that's, and that's the issue with those gates. Because we remulch and then the mulch gets higher, gets pressure, so you can't push the gate open. You have to pull it open across the concrete side. So that, that was the issue there with the gate. So we're not raising them, just open them properly for the people that need to get in. The digital speed limit signs, we were under the impression they need to be programmed by you guys.
All you guys have to do is put them up. We'll take care of the rest.
Oh, just want to program when they're already up. We'll take care of it. Okay, alright, alright. We'll be on that. Let's move on to Nelson Park. We all know there was a hole at the most inconvenient time, wasn't it? It's like, what in the world happened here at the worst time possible? But we had, we had a contractor come out and look at that. He dug around and what he found was, if you look at the hole, where that sink hole is. It's in between the water, the storm drains. And so one storm drain drains into the next storm drain, drains into the next, and there's a tile pipe connecting all of those. Some years ago, or some, at some point, somebody did some horizontal drilling in that area. And they drilled a hole right through the center of the pipe. So it didn't affect it right away because it's not pressurized. But what happened over time was the hole in the pipe sucked through some sand. And then over time, it sucked in more sand, and more sand. And when we had the porta bodies delivered. That was the straw that broke the camel's back and caved it in. So we have, we have a quote from the company now that will fix that pipe. And scope other pipes to see if there's any more horizontal drilling damage to any of the other pipes. And that cost is $4,500. For that total repair of the pipe that we know is damaged and scoping the others. So I'll just leave that, I'll just leave that with the board for now and wait for a decision and your funds off the.
What company was that that you worked?
Smith Escavator. And they were the only ones that would come up.
Thank you.
Uh, see, moving on to Harding and Day, there was a dead tree on the corner that we were all concerned about taking down. We went out, we, first we tried to get that quoted, but it was such a small job, nobody wanted to even come out and consider it. Knowing that we had other trees taken down. It's about $2,000, $2,500 charge for cutting down a tree. So we took, we took a day, or I guess it was actually a morning, and we just ran out there and chopped it down. So we'll have to stump up. If you want the stump ground, we don't have that equipment, so. I think stump ground is around $500 now, so if you want the stump ground, we call somebody, see if we can get them mobilized and, and trim that stump out. Otherwise, we can just leave it. So that's, that's the board's decision. But the tree is gone. We also made some, some, not repairs, but some lighting changes to the leaf machine. We, when we go through the town, as most of you have seen, we'll do a turnaround at the end of some of the streets. So we come up either the north or south side, trying to do the other side. When we're backing up, traffic doesn't seem to be able to see the big white trailer in the middle of the road. So we, we put some more flashy lights on the back of it. When we had that quoted for $330, well, we just looked at it and said, we'll do it ourselves. And we did. We think it looks nice. It's professional and the lights still blink and they're nice. They look like police officer yellow and, and white. Did you know, public still doesn't see that machine, so I don't know. Maybe next year we'll, we'll do something different. Welcome to our world. It's a thing we'll keep chasing, but that's where we're at on that. We went through town before and during the beginning of leaf season and picked up the last of the, what we refer to as SLBs. Thank you, thank you. So Borden, Borden finished their season. And the day after Borden finished their season, we went through and did some cleanup. Now we're into leaf season, so that's what we're concentrating on now. After leaf season, we're going to transfer all of our equipment over to snow. So now all of our SLB equipment is now in snow. But if you ride around town, as we're going through leaves, we're still moving SLBs off of leaf piles. So it'll be a conversation we'll have.
Do you still have hand cans for doors?
We do.
So what I would recommend is that you use those and remind people that they can put those into their bins, their trash bins for pickup.
They'll say the trash bins are now done for the season. Now that they do.
So they will take one bin of yard waste?
No, yeah, but if you can fit your yard waste in with your garbage, they'll take it.
Oh, okay, alright. We're live streaming now, so public, that's how we use it in your garbage cans.
So they can put sticks left in the center.
Okay, they can break them out and give them in the trash bin.
Even if it takes two weeks, right? Two garbage breakups.
Yeah, a week at a time is all. You can fit in a part of it, so they'll take it.
Alright, alright. Thank you for that information. Just reading through my notes.
That's what we do as well.
We, we were in the middle of leaf season and we blew a brake line on one of the trucks that we used to pull the leaf machine with. So we had to have it pulled and towed to Pyramid to repair the brake line. It was quite extensive. We just got that back. And I did not see the invoice come in. Maybe Josh Lane's seen it already, so I can't tell you how much that repair was.
I just have a question on that. Didn't we just have those trucks gone through?
We did.
I was gonna ask the same thing.
Right, and what we found or what we were told by Pyramid was there are some rubber gaskets or rubber boots at the end of the brake lines that dry rot over time, and that failed. So what we're, we're gonna do now is put that on our PM schedule to alert Pyramid or whatever company we decide to go with in the future that during our PM, number one, we want them changed on the truck that did not blow out, so at least we'll have, we'll know we'll have those fresh. And just keep an eye on that. If we wear out every three years, we'd rather replace them every three years on a non-emergency basis than have a breakdown.
It just seems kind of odd that we had the whole truck gone through and they would have missed a dry rotted brake line.
And what detail they're looking at on a DOT inspection? Yeah, I don't know. I'm not a mechanic. I don't know what they would be looking at to that kind of detail. I know he had a bad shirt again or would've been caught. I don't know.
Hey, you see, the year where they were happening, it just seems kinda odd that would've been...
But just so the board knows, when that happened, we, we adapted. We switched the trucks over, so we didn't lose any leaf pile pickups due to that. We just switched, because we had two trucks. We switched it over and we continued on. I think that truck was down for two weeks, two and a half weeks, actually. So, so we kept going, and now, we got the regular, that truck back, and, and we're still gonna be going. Now, we got both trucks going. Okay, now, I wanna talk about...
One second, so is one truck ready for the snow and one truck is ready for leaves then?
That's correct. Well, we did, we did not fit the snow truck yet.
Okay. I didn't know you had one truck ready for following in one truck.
Not yet. We're gonna put the salt bins in the one truck when we have availability to put that in. And then, we'll at least have a one truck set up for salt if we need it. And then, we'll keep rocking and rolling. Hopefully, we won't need salt until after we're done. Still leaves, but you never know, right?
We're like gloves.
That's why we live here, right?
See snow this weekend.
Yeah, okay. I wanna roll into leaf season update now. I wish I would've, I wish we could've done this maybe last meeting because I've not been involved with, with leaf season to the effect of this type of information and the things that we're seeing. I've heard nightmares, and I've heard the stories, but I thought better late than never. And I'm gonna give this leaf season update now for the public and for the board. First thing I wanna do is wanna talk about our crew. Earlier, I talked about how we're part-time people, and we are. We are, we're three full-time, part-time people right now, and hopefully, in the near future, we'll have our fourth. I'll talk about the four. The four, one is a retired operations manager, myself. I retired, and I do this for fun. This is just something that I do to get out and get some, get some nature and get some work in and just use my body and my mind and my spirit. So, I enjoy this kind of work, and I have fun doing it. Another crew member is a retired police officer. He's in the same position I am. He wants something to fill his day, and he wants to come out and, and use his body, mind, and spirit as well. So, that's what he does, and he loves doing this work. And that's what he did, that's what he chose to do to fill his part-time. The other two folks are firefighters, and they are currently on the job. So, we all know firefighters work twenty-four on, forty-eight off. So, we come around, every third day, we lose those two firefighters, and they both happen to be on the same shift. So, every third day, we have two people working at Trail Creek Street Department, which is fine, because we keep up with things. We know what needs to be done, and we do it on a daily basis. During leaf season, we hire some seasonal help, which we were able, we asked, we run around, we tried to find, we begged, we borrowed, we tried to steal people, and finally, we found two people, two young guys that will come out and help us. They're firefighters. So, they're currently firefighters, so every third day, we're missing them. Fortunately, they're on a different shift than the other two firefighters. So, now, during leaf season, we can have four people on a crew. So, we're working out well as far as that goes. And I just wanna say that with the crew that we have, we're no slackers. We're out, and when we're out there, we're getting it. And we're trying to do a good job for everyone and not just, not just for each individual resident, but for the town as a whole. We take great pride in seeing that long stretch of leaves and completing it, turn around looking and seeing none. And that's very satisfying to us, and we really enjoy that. We work days that other people don't. Veterans Day, we have two veterans on our crew. And we elected not to stay Veterans Day off because leaves were out. Let's do it. We'll celebrate Veterans Day another day. So, we did that. That was a hard week because city was closed. City was closed on Election Day and Veterans Day. So, we had to do some creative things, and we were able to pick up leaves and dump, regardless, the city was closed. So, kept going on that. Before I get to the next part, I just wanna say to the board, I know you read the letter, and that letter, I've heard that story several times from several different people. I would just like to say that, that I'll speak on behalf of the crew, and we're gonna take exception to the board taking consideration of the letter and not just passing the letter off for what it is. And I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. The residents in town, what we enjoy is, for the most part, you see residents in their yards driving around. They're waving at us, they're giving us the thumbs up, they're saying, "Thank you." The residents appreciate what we do, and I feel that. And it's just a shame that we have to read that letter, right?
Mike, I'll stop you for a minute, and I have to interrupt you. And I agree with you. I would say that most of our residents do appreciate you, but you have to give some equal time to the people who...
I understand, I understand.
When I say I have to give them consideration, I have to listen to all the residents.
Okay.
Fortunately, that's part of what happens. Not always the fun part, but...
I do, okay. I just wanna say thank you to some of our friends out there.
Thank you for everything.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Because we know that you work hard.
I see out there.
And these people out there every day, you know?
I just wanna express a thank you now. If you're watching out there, there are some people, they run out and they give us snacks, they give us some trick-or-treat candies or whatever. That kinda keeps us going, and we enjoy that. We have, I call them my buddies, they live over on Whopperwell with some kids, and they write thank you notes, and they're always waving at the window when we go by. And if we see one, I can give a little honk or something. So, it's, it's those kinda things that keep us going, not the letter. The letter is not our motivation. Our motivation is, is the public and, like I said, looking behind us and seeing the line going on. That's our motivation. In regards to the letter, and some of the people that the letter said, that they talk to and they don't understand what we do, I'm gonna tell you what we do. This is our process. When we go out and we look for leaves, we start with a flow, and we like to give everybody their turn. We can't skip around town, look for big leaf piles and just take those big leaf piles. So, when we start out, we, we have the town broke off in districts. So, we'll start at District One. Leaf season, day one, we start at District One, which is, District One will be separated by the mains will be the Boulevard to Greenwood and then the east-west side. So, that's, this is District One, moving, moving north to south. District Two is Greenwood to Whopperwell and everything that encompasses that square. Three is Whopperwell to Cool Spring and everything that encompasses that square. Number four is Cool Spring to Wellness, everything in there. Number five, Wellness, and then parts south. When we finish that, five, we go on to six, which we, we refer to as the Bugs, which be Firefly and Cricket. So, that'll be the next. So, number six, and after that, we'll, we'll travel north on Johnson Road from the Bugs and take care of everything that's there on the east side of Johnson Road as we travel north to the Boulevard. Then, we venture out to the Chapala Parkway and Old Mill and Mankin, and we'll take care of that area. When that area is completed, we come back and we start District One all over again. So, that is, that is our flow through town. And in each district, if you, if you look, we're just doing a series of right turns because the hose is on the right side of the truck. That's where all the piles are. We're just taking a series of right turns, turn around at the end of the road, come back at the other side. So, we're, we're methodically going through town, district by district, keeping everybody's turn in line, and we're not skipping around giving you guys a different...
So, before you go any further, I want, I want you to clarify for people so they understand. So, I'm sure in the beginning of leaf season pickup, you could probably hit more than one district in a day.
Well, maybe the whole town. I think this, I think this year, we hit the whole town in one day.
But then, to take that a step further, when the leaf piles do start to get higher, you may not even hit a whole district in one day.
We, we've taken multiple days in one district.
So, that's, and that's where I think where people, the town residents are kinda missing that, is that obviously, when more leaves begin to fall, we get further into the leaf season, you may not be able to hit an entire district in a day. And that's where I think people may be getting kinda confused, because we only have one leaf machine and so many people to run it. So, obviously, it's gonna take you longer to get through town as we get further into the leaf season. Now, we're starting to trail off now, so I'm thinking that...
We're still in it hot and heavy. We figure we gotta get through town. This time, we're still, we're, we're in the middle of District Three right now. So, when we get through District Three and work our way through town, we figure that's our, that's our big, that's our big through town. And then, we'll start making quicker passes through town.
Got it.
Right now, we're, we're still in heavy. And to give you some idea, and give the residents some idea, if you see where we left off on the day, or if we're, if you see us out and we're picking leaves off on a certain part of the street, just follow our path, and we get, we get less than one-half a mile per load. And we get six loads a day. So, if you wanna get in your car and you wanna know when your leaves are gonna be picked up, you find out where we're at, and then, you travel that three miles a day. If you're farther than three miles on the route, it's not a week today. It's gonna be a month or if you're farther than that. It might be two days from that, it might be next week. But it takes time. It's a slow-moving process.
My question.
Yes.
Just on hypothetical, but if you, once your wagon is full, what's the turnaround time from time to leave, you'll get back?
It's half hour, forty-five minutes. Depending on where we're at and how you're at, at the end of Mankin, close to an hour.
So, you'll apply that by six?
Yeah, basically. And that's why we're getting six loads a day.
No, yeah, I get it. And sometimes we should, I don't know, we can't, there is, in the area, there used to be an area that we allowed to do that stage.
Transfer?
Yeah, just, just something for us to think about. Not maybe this year, right?
I know what he was talking about. I know where it used to be, and I thought we still have property.
But anyway, I was just...
And I, I understand, and I know where you're going, but just like reading through my notes, I wanna let everybody know we are at load number sixty-eight. We've done sixty-eight loads this year. Typically, we do a hundred and five loads. So, we're nearly there. And...
Well, my next question was, is your technically, the schedule is what, the third of December?
The eighth.
Eight? May feel pretty comfortable so far?
No, absolutely. We got two, four weeks beyond Thanksgiving.
Long as it snows.
If it snows, we're still. That machine will suck up snow just as well as it'll suck up the leaf. But it's just a little colder on our feet, that's all.
Okay.
But I think the, the thing is, not trying to be more efficient and lessen the travel time and get more loads a day. I think patience is what we need, patience and understanding. The loads, the leaves will be cleaned up, they were cleaned up last year. They were cleaned up last year before our end of schedule date. And that was a hundred and four loads, I think we had. Again, we're at sixty-eight. We have, we have two weeks in a day to go, and we're getting six loads a day. The math is simple.
Well, we still have to say, have to say we get these letters that it's not uncommon once or twice, you know, a season.
And that's why I keep looking at the camera.
We gotta do your best.
The thing is, you're never gonna please everybody all the time.
No, no, we're not.
It is to protect the job.
I hope if we're not pleasing fifty people out there, hopefully, if the fifty people we're not pleasing understands the process, maybe thirty of those will understand the process, and next year, we'll only have twenty. And then, maybe something will happen with those twenty, and then, maybe we'll only have ten. And let's, let's get down to one person that we're not pleasing. And that's our goal. As long as I'm pleasing eight hundred and fifty households, I'm happy. So, I just, I just wanted to run that process down to you. And a few things I wanted to mention now for the public is, and we're talking about efficiency, how long it takes us to get out there and get back. We're trying to reduce these times, and can't you be a little faster? Can't you do this? Here's some of the things we run into that residents can help us out with. We have cars that park right in the middle of the piles. We have cars that sandwich the piles. I have one gentleman that was, he came up to my truck as I'm driving it and asked when we were gonna be back in the area, because we were gonna pick his leaves up today, and he wanted to know when we're gonna be back in the area. And I told him, "Maybe a week, week and a half." And, "Sir, could you move your car? Because we're gonna turn around and get these leaves." And he looked at me and shook his head and went back in his house, left his car there. So, now, we slow down, we can't go move, we can't move ahead and fluff our loads so that the truck keeps going. We have to stop the truck. Everybody get out, rake behind the car, move up. Everybody rake in front of the car. Takes an extra five, ten minutes. Five, ten minutes here or there, it adds up. Piles not moved to the easement. Some piles, again, there was one the other day, we swore about the sun, a pile. But you, if you have, if you have a roadway, pull your piles close to the easement so we can get at them. We've seen people that have probably five hundred feet of lawn space, but they insist on putting their leaves in twenty feet of that. And it's piled back into their yard. So, now, again, the hose stops. We're no longer moving the truck. So, that, that half mile or that quarter mile's gonna take you a month, because we gotta stop. Everybody's gonna rake the leaves up because they're not moved up to the easement or they're not fully taking advantage of their entire frontage. Piles surrounding poles, signs, and mailboxes. We have had mailboxes almost covered up. I don't know how the mailman came up. He knows, he's been there before, but the mailboxes are just piled up with leaves. So, now, again, we're not moving, stop the truck. Let's clean the leaves away from the mailbox. Let's clean the leaves away from the poles and, and... It just slows the process down. And then, you go back to the yard, and there's plenty of room to put the leaves.
So, what I'm hearing is a potential mailer out to our residents so they can understand one? Well, so they can understand that if you would like your leaves picked up in a timely manner and for the leaf machine to get through town faster, if you could please do these mental things in order to make that happen, it would be greatly appreciated.
I totally put something together. Joe and I did something a couple, like a year and a half, two years ago. And maybe we could go back through that and refresh that history.
Maybe for next year. I mean, now, we're, now, we're at the end, we're coasting down the hill. We're, we're gonna get it done. But these are some of the frustra, and it wouldn't even be frustrations if I didn't hear all the complaints.
This would be the time right after the season is done to go through that again?
Don't forget.
This is the time to redo it and get it ready for spring, right?
Yeah, sure.
That we're ready to release it maybe a week or two before the spring leaves pick up? And then, a week or two before fall?
And what John's memories more than anything would be to skip the piles. Not that we're not gonna get them before the end of the season, but we're just not gonna get them today. But we haven't done that yet. We've gotten everything, it's just slowed the process down.
Yeah, I would prefer not to go that route.
And I understand, and that's, that's what our, that's our mindset is we're out on the road. It's like, man, we should just skip this pile, but no, let's get at it. No, let's get it done. But, but yeah, it's frustrating, especially when you hear complaints and, and then, right behind that, you see a thank you, and it kinda brings you back. So, another thing that holds us up is leaves on top of landscaping. There's a lot of nice landscaping out there. People like to landscape their, their frontages and their easements. But what they don't understand is if it's a flowerbed and there's, there's some landscaping walls, we're tripping over the landscape wall because you put the leaves on top of the walls.
You can't see that.
You can't see it. You can't see it until you run into it.
Right.
Boulders, rocks, I mean, if you pile the leaves up on your rocks, a lot of times, what we do when we go through, if you watch our process, we'll go through and we'll move, we'll physically move the leaves by kicking them. So, if the rocks are in there, we're kicking over rocks a lot. And then, it's like, hey, watch out, you know, just nail the rock. You know, just nail the rock. We, we, uh, we do that quite often. Some rocks will get sucked up in the tube. And that's not good. Following that, some things that slow us down is equipment breakdowns. You mentioned before, we have one, right? We have two trucks, we're able to overcome that and, and we kept moving. But the leaf machine itself, we have one. By design, it's self-destructing. The impellers in there, they, it turns, it sucks into the, the hose. The hose is nothing more than rubber light on a tire. So it sucks the air in, the impellers grab the leaves and it's just like Sam West, constantly, over and over again. So it's, it's a self-destructing machine and we can deal with that with leaves. But when you come into a driveway or an easement full of rocks, we had one gentleman that had a pile of rocks. And we didn't know it until we got into it. And, and it, uh, we, we think that was, we think that was the, the thing that broke out one of our, our, uh, weldings. We had to weld today, we had to weld a hole today because it, it just ate through. The rocks come through and it just blasted through the steel. We stopped it, of course, as some of we've seen it, but a lot of things you don't see until you get in there. Consider, consider the end of that tube like a tornado. And we've all seen the tornado things that, tornadoes pick up two-by-fours and throw them through houses. We've had, we've had oak branches inside the piles. We picked up pieces of steel in the piles. We just had to buy a new hose because we picked something up and it went through the holes, went through the impeller and went into the back of the truck. It didn't damage the impeller, we looked at it, we, we were thankful. That probably was a, probably was a stick or something. But it got in there and it ripped a hole in the side of the hose that we put our hand through. So now we're dead in the water because somebody decided they wanted to put something that didn't belong in, in the leaf pile or just didn't pay attention or notice there or keep their eyes out. We try to do that as we go through. We actually picked up a, uh, a, a front-end part off of a car, a steel front-end part. Uh, the, the person on the tube was going through and they just caught their eye and they kicked it out of the way. It was about the square, solid steel. If that would've went through, there would've been another hose or, or caught up in the impeller and damaged that. But, uh, but those, those are the things that, that people don't think about that holds us up, that could damage our equipment, that could cost the town of Trail Creek and the board have to make serious financial decisions. I guess that's it for me. I grab along for twice my time. But that's it. Did I miss anything you, that you needed to note from the street department?
I don't think so.
No, just, uh, tell the crew that we really appreciate you guys.
I'll, I'll pass that on, yeah.
You're doing really good, Mike.
All right. All right, and we'll keep it up and...
And you'll be up tomorrow at what time?
Seven AM.
Star, it's seven AM.
We crank it up at seven AM and we've been fortunate, we've caught the gate open after three. So normally, we're here, we roll back in at three-thirty, three-forty-five with our last dump. And that, that's straight through. I mean, you won't see us in that McDonald's eating a sandwich. That's, that's all day. That's all day, truck steadily rolling, uh...
And you're still area three, District Three tomorrow?
We're District Three tomorrow, yes. Might not get through it. There's some nice piles, we have black though. I know, yeah. Yeah, but, well...
I'm not a reason, why don't, why don't, and we're going.
We're, 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 we're almost through the outskirts of the, the surrounding of District Three. So now we're gonna start getting on the inside of District Three and, and hopefully we'll get through District Three and get into District Four tomorrow. That, that would be a good thing for us. We're gonna, we're gonna strive for that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think you did an excellent job.
Yeah.
Thank you. Real quick, the letter that, that was written, I guess I could've touched base on this earlier. I, I did give a call for service to that residence for her, uh, it was last Tuesday, so I don't know if the letter was written. And I did, she did, uh, address her concerns and I explained to her exactly what you went through. So, and she has a better understanding now of what it actually takes. And I even offered to bring her out Friday because I was off Wednesday, Thursday. And I offered to bring her out so she could walk behind to see how actual labor-intensive that process is. And I really think she has a better understanding. So, and I did really, I was there when I talked about it. But I think it's important that that letter has actually already been addressed with her.
And I thank you because that letter was written on the tab.
Uh, I don't even know what that was.
So that was, if you talked to her last Wednesday?
Last Tuesday.
That was written.
Fourteen, well, four, four, so.
But that's hard to kind of address and we wanted to, to think about it, but...
Yeah, we had a conversation and she's all better. She called me also and she said that she has spoken with Marshall Dick, so.
Then state it here.
Very good.
Anything for eighty-eight, moving on?
No, not too much. I would just say that we need to, I like to keep it on the list here all the time. As a reminder, we need to discuss, get kind of a plan. Actually, we, our next one here.
Anything for Nancy?
I have a meeting on December seventh.
Full business, anything for golf carts?
Unless you guys intend to entertain it in a short...
Well, we take it off the list if we need, I think, Steve, I think. Yeah, we need to let Steve know what he's gonna be doing because there are people, right?
Are there people trying to go first?
There's only one thing to do if you intend to.
Yeah. No, there's not. The, the, the person that came to a meeting a couple of months ago, I had actually stopped him from riding his golf cart. We had addressed this a couple of years back and, uh, the council decided at that time not to enact an ordinance along with golf carts on the road. And when he came back and was revisited, there's really, it's just a matter of whether or not he, it's whether the council's pleasure is.
I'm just saying that...
I'm not saying I...
I know you don't, because it's not often, but for some reason, they seem like Nelson Park area. They go up and down Whipplewell or they plonk down, uh...
You don't see it very often. Well, I, I don't see it very often.
I'm just saying, case what, if we table it or whatever, we should decide what if Steve's guys see one on the road, what do they do?
At that point, then the state statute kicks in. Because there's a state statute for golf carts and the state statute actually authorizes councils for towns and cities to enact ordinances, legalizing them on the streets within their corporate limits, if I'm correct. You went through this recently.
I did. If you do nothing, the state statutes, you have the ability to legalize them. And if you do nothing, then your argument is they are not enforced against the traffic laws.
So, so that's where, that's fine. And so if you take it, if you take it off, then it's a bad issue that we just enforce the traffic law.
Yeah.
And again, we're, we talk to our residents and educate, it's an education process.
Okay.
I would like to see a table until January.
Okay.
Any other, opposition to that? Do you have a motion to table the golf carts until January?
I, I'm just gonna say, I know that when it came out before this, we tabled that indefinitely before.
But because we have an entire, we have two council members coming on, I'd like to give them their voice.
And also, you did have a resident come in within the last few months.
Right.
Asking, and then last month, Chris gave you guys samples of ordinances available from surrounding towns.
I moved to table this until January.
Just a second.
So you're...
Thank you all in favor.
Aye.
Anything on student design for town entry assignments?
Uh, students are still working with them and trying to hear your ideas. I was hoping for the future.
Okay. Moving on to town hall bid award or rejections.
The, uh, uh, there were, of course, two, two bids and, uh, one was based on a three-month, uh, project, the other one was based on a six-month project. And, uh, in my opinion, just on math discussion, I'd say, you know, six months is really a high for this little place that sounds, uh, way out of line, plus it was, it was a higher price, it was a higher price of two. So I don't know, or you can go ahead and continue with the conversation?
Please.
We, uh, uh, we're thinking that for right now, because of what we have, the change of, uh, uh, officers in the town here, would be to table this, not make any decisions, uh, this year and allow the new people to get their, uh, foot in the door, get warmed up and get some ideas. And just be kind of courteous, I think, courteous to them, uh, on that plan. So they have a full idea of what, what's going on, could have.
So, and that brings up the question, how long are the bids valid for?
They are good for sixty-eight.
Which means they may have to redo the bids.
Well, I think you're very likely, and I think your other concern is whether you're gonna continue to get people to bid. Because that'd be twice the even agenda. So going forward and costs, but, but, but you gotta do.
Costs is an issue as well because they were, how much were the bids?
It's not gonna be any cheaper. Yeah, I think the lowest was three hundred and thirty, three sixty, and then four hundred.
Yep.
So, yeah, those are all, timing, costs are gonna continue to go up, but you know, without a bid, and that's doubtful. But I think one of your bigger concerns is, I watch them. To consecutive time for you to get people to bid.
Yeah, no. But it's possible that, uh, if we, uh, are still one more pretty quickly here, we talked to one contractor and see if they extend it. They'll extend it for thirty days.
And it may be that you pick the incoming numbers. Because again, maybe you can have a workshop with the public and one of those is wanting to see. So that, some, some combination of that, of an extension of that also.
Yep. Yeah, I am, that's, I'm just saying that there's a little involvement going on.
I, I think that's a lot, um, it's, it's just a lot right now. The timing is gonna be rough.
Hypothetically, if we could, you know, get it moving forward in February, uh, if everybody, uh, gives a blessing, then I guess we'll work.
Correct. Even if we accept a bid, move forward, that doesn't mean the timeframe has to go forward right now. That doesn't mean the work has to start January first or November first.
Well, they're only required, so when you give them the notice of receipt, right at some point, and their bid is only good for a certain, but I do think the showstands are emotional. That's our time, assuming it works with their manpower and other jobs that they have and scheduling. For that part, I think you can't, you know, you're not messing with the material portions of the bids from either. So there's a lot of very advantage there, but...
I can, uh, I don't know, we decided, I can connect with Doug and...
I guess I would like to say like who, who actually made which bid?
Collin, Collin Day was the lower.
Well, yeah, Collin Day.
Collin Day.
Collin Day.
Collin Day was the lowest one.
And the three, they had lower, uh, timer.
Yep, yep.
But from my review, everything is material.
Got my next question.
Well, they were in order in terms of their bids mission, so the next was, it made a recommendation.
Yeah, it is.
And otherwise apples to apples, as far as what they were recommending, depending on what the work.
So we can ask if we want, we can start the ball by asking if they can extend it for, what, thirty days or forty-five days? Camper?
I don't know what happens if we move to accept the lowest bid tonight and then that just...
Well, I, I wouldn't suggest. Because you have timeframe that warrant that I revisit that and then if you have to have nothing add to your place, but if you have to have a special meeting, that that's probably a better route to go. So that you're not worried something could potentially happen.
I would feel better about that.
A poor decision.
Right.
I would feel better about making it a, a better educated decision than just moving forward blind money.
Mm-hmm.
No problem with that. We've got it.
So a motion needs to be made in order to get through this portion of the bid? No motion?
Just leave it?
No.
Okay, no.
As well. No. We'll get together with another meeting.
Okay.
Um, the sinkhole at Nelson Park, we need to come back to that. So who's got the lead on that? Other than the information that Mike gave us?
Is there, uh, my question would be, this, I always ask a question, forty-five hundred dollars, where are we coming?
That was gonna be my question.
And is that, is that a category that's an emergency?
That is an emergency.
Or is that help if that's...
It is, but we do have a little bit of money left over in our contractor services. Also, we could file our insurance claim, but I don't really have the information, so I don't hope that's...
Especially after there are potential findings or something, it could be something, but internally...
Do we know, do we have under our power there?
Do you have, you're probably pretty close to that.
It's like this eighteen T box.
Yeah.
There's that.
It's overhead. It's overhead power.
I'm trying to think who would've done the boring, that would've bored through that.
I don't remember anybody doing any type of boring anytime recently either.
That building's got overhead power going.
That's kind of what I was trying to think. It was, that was the only thing I could think that anyone would've been doing it kind of boring. Where either been gas or power.
Well, we could, we could make a, a motion to, uh, pursue this, that could just be prepared.
So we definitely need to get it repaired.
Uh, and then, uh, the insurance stuff, that could be like afterwards.
I don't know if they have, they're not really giving a lot of information about this. And we have some sort of report.
I'd like to make a motion to get it repaired for forty-five hundred dollars from insurance.
So we've got a motion to repair the sinkhole. Sorry, motion to repair the sinkhole at Nelson Park for forty-five hundred dollars through contractor Smith and Sons. Do we have a second?
A second of that?
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. I don't know whether we get anything back from insurance, even if we had photos. It's worth a shot, but it's, I just don't know if we're getting anything back there.
Oh, it's interesting.
Hard to diagnose if it's a thousand, so.
Yeah, because it's worth a shot, but I don't know whether we can.
Of course, yes.
And then here's the other...
Five hundred doesn't seem like a lot.
Here's the other question. If something did bore through that, is there something through the tile right now then? That we have to worry about digging around? Did we do any boring over there? Do you recall?
Because I know that part of town, tile is on fiber optic.
Yeah, unless...
And then I go right, if, that there's a fiber optic through there. I don't wanna throw them under the bus without know, but I know that there is fiber optic in that area.
I think it's everything is, uh, south of Cool Spring is where they are. Okay.
Okay, so...
I just, I, I don't want them, just Smith to come out and, you know, they go to excavate this and all of a sudden they find something in the ground like a gas line or, or something like that.
They gotta call for it.
Well, right, but then whatever's through that tile is gonna have to be moved then also. Am I incorrect in thinking that?
You are correct. Depending on what it is that was, uh, drilled through there, if it's a cable, you could actually, you know, take it up or under it without having to, to, uh, have a big excavation for that. I went out there and took a look at it October twenty-sixth, I could take Baker out there. I, I looked in, down in the hole, I didn't see anything crossing through the pipe. But you, you could tell that it just had collapsed in on it. And, you know, the big hole there, there's no dirt, so where did the dirt go?
Right, it got washed down.
Washed down that, that pipe. So I recommended that Dixon Pike fill the hole. You televise the inside, when they televise, they have to jet it, so clean it out. And that would show if there's any crossings.
And that's what this forty-five hundred dollars is gonna pay for too, so. Correct. I'll be interested in finding what they find.
So Mike, when that happens, I'm assuming you're being contacted now, so it's on, right? And our engineer, too, be part of that loop?
Uh, if he wants to be sure.
If you could.
Yeah.
That'd be a good idea. Just while you're out.
But you can, you can, uh, label this as an emergency repair, so you don't have to get quotes and all that.
Except for that public safety issue in my eye.
Yes, it's a very big...
On contractor services, we'll just use it. So moving on. Mr. Crayler, did he send a letter for St. Stan's?
Uh, you know, actually, today I received an email stating that they could not make it. They might be agenda for December.
Okay.
Is it just gonna be a request for five K?
Okay. Five K again, so we'll revisit that in December. And we got our CCMG invoice payment, and they get payment of house filling. That two, um, two separate things. So we'll do the CCMG invoice payment first. Is that what you have that one?
On that one, um, there are, there's one item that's not finished yet on the job. And so striking on Cool Spring, there's twenty-four hundred and sixty feet that hasn't been striked yet. It was from fifty-two feet west of Yankee to all the trail, Trail Street. They were supposed to do it yesterday and/or last week, and we kept moving it out. But then we didn't get it done, because we were hoping that sometime this week it would get done. So we're recommending that all the payments be approved. So payment number one is for two thousand, uh, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and five dollars and seventy-two cents. And then the second approval will be to retain from that payment thirty-one thousand, sixty-seven dollars and thirty cents. And then, once the striking gets done, payment number two will be the release of that retainage.
I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure I saw the striking truck today.
Did you see it out there today?
I did see it today, yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, that makes me feel a lot better. I don't usually like to recommend payment for something that's not done yet. But it's the only item, and the retainage is thirty-one thousand, and the striking only costs two thousand. So we were gonna be holding a lot of money back from them to ensure that that would get finished. So that was our recommendation, go ahead and approve all of the payments and retainage. But do not deliver the retainage until we have a chance to look and inspect the striking. So once it's done, we'll look at it, and we'll inform you. It's okay to give them the release on that retainage.
Okay, so tell me, say that one more time, you want us to retain thirty-one thousand?
Yeah, thirty-one thousand is, thirty-one thousand, sixty-seven dollars. So that's three one zero six seven and thirty cents.
Until the striking is complete.
And inspected.
Got it. Complete and inspected.
And Sam, those issues, and the documents, uh, teach, Josh, and you like it?
Council, we have a motion to, um, make payment?
Wait for you to say it, I think you just talked quite a bit.
So can, what was the total again? Because I'm getting hungry, just stopped doing math.
For the payment or the?
For the payment.
For the payment, right.
The payment is two seven nine comma six oh five period and seventy-two cents.
Have a moment here, it's been a very long day. So we get a motion to pay two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy cents for the CCMG contract to milestone contractors north. Thank you, Warren. Do we have a second?
Second, well, okay, we need to add that we're going to retain the thirty-one thousand.
I was gonna say, worth the retaining of thirty-one thousand, sixty-seven dollars and thirty cents until the striking is complete and inspected by Hudson Associates.
If that's Warren's motion, I will second that motion.
That's the motion.
And a second, any further discussion or questions? Sharon?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, opposed, motion passes. Okay. Moving on to the invoice from Hudson Associates, next. And so we've got actually, it's like two invoices from Hudson Associates. One for CCMG, bid document preparation, construction, and design. And another one for general engineering for twenty twenty-three. First, they're both pretty self-explanatory, council, if you read through them. The first one for CCMG, design, bid document preparation and construction, and it's a total of twenty thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Do we have a motion to approve that one first?
I'm sure we should approve positive invoice of twenty thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-eight cents.
And I'll send it, and Sharon, all in favor?
Aye.
And the second invoice, the total amount of one thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-five cents for general engineering services of twenty twenty-three.
Um, invoice will pay, and that's invoice number two zero two three 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 zero dash zero zero one dash zero four.
And a second?
A second.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries there as well? Any further public comments this evening?
I think it's just an accident, it's something busy with you.
I'd say, first of all.
I'm a heating contractor in the community, and I've driven in a lot of areas with the golf carts allowed. And you've got people out there driving, young people, even older people. They're not being detention, they're having a haul, which is great, but there's accidents that are happening, are almost happening. Uh, it's a real distraction out there. But I think it's, uh, it's just not that, it's really, we have to, we have to. Because I don't think we have a large enough police force to handle what actually worked out this. Watching these people, a lot of the director people, out there parking on their phones, and doing everything else, watching TV or whatever, what they've done, so. I don't, I know a lot of other people with family folk, never.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crayler.
Welcome.
Any other public comment?
Yes.
Check down on the phone, probably, I didn't do that. I just went backwards for a second, the Harding app property. Wasn't that taken up with council like two years ago?
It has been taken up with council for several years.
What happened with that?
Which time?
Big one.
So, a few years ago, we found out that there are actually two separate property owners on that, on that home. I think we went over that earlier this year, that ninety percent of the home is owned by one owner, and then there's a small sliver of the home, as well as another piece of property next door that's owned by a separate owner. And so it's trying to get those two property owners to figure out who actually owns the, all of the home or everything else. Try to get that figured out. We put that in this, so we're basically, I'm just trying to get that situation sorted out. And then we're going to work on both properties, if you were to try to figure out, get the, all of the ordinance violations sorted out.
It's a plan moving forward, that's just so we can. Previously, there was some discussion about moving forward with the demolition. Since then, there's been ownership that has changed hands. So there's a civil action that's potentially pending between the new owner, which is the charitable organization that got ownership through a donation. So in trying to ultimately do what's best for the town, they spend the least amount of town funds is to give them the opportunity to go through with that. And so the new owner, through conversations, I know they've contacted, or Treasury Board, I've had a couple of conversations with them, in terms of making sure that they record their deed to show the new ownership, and then attempt to start taking actions. Their hope was to either buy out the other individual or to go to court on their own, simply to do what's called a petition act. So that, that has been the crux of some of these things. But in order for the town to be ready to move forward, so this doesn't drag on, because it's a thorn for people, is to have our baseline of citations, and they've been warned with that. We sent them court funds, so there's a process. My concern is, there's a lot of money going into this, and nothing's happening. Because I know attorney per rock was handling it before. There isn't any money going through here, that's the whole purpose, so. And, and those attorney fees and such. Well, and so attorney's fees that are incurred in this process can also be tapped on. If there's a demolition, and that would be part of the. All right, I guess I just don't want to see this happen a few times. Nothing gets done.
Nor do we.
Yeah.
Nor do we.
So I'm just checking with council. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Any council comments this evening?
Oh, clerk first.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I totally.
It's okay.
Again, I'm having a moment this evening. I wouldn't have forgotten, you know, for a contact.
I just want to say to all the property inventory vendors that, um, bills were appreciated for here. So get your bills and your invoices in. If Steve, if you have any that are sitting, or you need to follow up with Star, you're informed, that'd be great. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, now, embarrassed. Uh, any council comments?
I would like to publicly thank the park board for a job well done on the Fall Festival. I'm sorry that Amanda had to leave, but my job is very well done. We have heard echoes of, um, the same comments, many compliments on that, um, over and over and over again. Same thing with trick or treat, although I have had a few residents that were a little confused on the date. So next year, we need to do a better job of announcing when we're doing trick or treat formally. Um, other than that, anyone else have anything else to add?
I just want to thank the street department for everything that they do, honestly. I mean, the one letter does not speak for the whole town. I see you guys out every day, going back and forth, sucking up the leaves. I see you. So I know you're out there, I know you're doing what you need to do. And I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, make sure that, make sure you pass that on to the crew.
Yes, most definitely.
Please, Joe.
We feel pretty smart.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.